...that you have on here, have all of these been approved or is just the one twenty?
Just the twenty year one is what the credit check was for and what we would be authorizing today.
Okay, so that's our one and only option today?
Today, yes.
And this interest rate, of course, is fixed interest.
Yes.
And if Everett, your concerns are very real and I appreciate that statement very much and I've operated my business for going forty-four years now. I never had any money, all the money to operate, never. From day one, I've borrowed large amounts of money to give her up today and I continue today to borrow large amounts of money and... How I see it is, there's one thing that a lot of people don't understand today about business, doing business and getting involved in business and expanding business. The one thing today, the cheapest thing there is out there today, you never see it cheaper than that money. You'd never be able to, I'm gonna say in my lifetime and your lifetime, able to borrow money cheaper than it is today. And doing business, borrowing money is not bad, it's a good thing. You obviously gotta have a good business to try to pay it back. I mean, you can borrow money at one percent, little girl, you can borrow money at ten percent, make twenty percent. So you obviously gotta know what you're doing, but I think what a lot of people are overlooking, the same economy that's gonna get worse, do this, do that. I ignore that. I am working on the cheapest thing I will ever see and my son will ever see in his lifetime than that money. It would never get cheaper, very cheap and people overlook that. And it's not wrong to borrow money at today's prices to expand. If I tried to expand on my own money, even what I had twenty years ago, I would not have got what I have today. It's all been, there was a time I was paying as high as thirteen percent interest, back in the seventies, early eighties. I was paying thirteen percent interest on many loans, some eight percent, some nine, some five. And I couldn't do it today, but today I'm borrowing money, you replace from five and a half percent. It works, if it works, do it, if you want to expand. If you don't wanna expand, you wanna sit here, don't. My bid is, I see two options. Stay where you are and go broke or expand and move ahead with the economy, society and new technology and all that. And that's what I am doing, my son, Jim, my wife and Jim, so... I respect, like you said, a hundred percent, but I'm extremely conservative, I've been here all my life, but we wanna move on, we wanna expand, we want my son to be able to stay with the business expanded. We're doing that and we're making money doing it because of cheap interest, so it's not all bad, but I really respect what you're saying, and I always have. I don't see that, I respectfully disagree with you, Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I agree with you that right now money's cheap and probably won't be cheaper. The second point though is, when you're borrowing money, you're in charge of it, you have assets and you're creating something. Government doesn't create anything. It doesn't, doesn't create widgets that you can sell and you can increase the number of widgets by doing what you do. All we're doing here is taking people from this building and putting them in this building, basically. I mean, bottom line, that's really, that's really what's happening. It may make it a little bit more efficient, we may save some money on, you know, electricity and heating, but we're not, we're not growing anything. And that's not growing the county, his point is that the county's population is shrinking unless there's some business that comes here, there's really not a lot of reason, at least right now, you know, for us to expect that it's gonna grow. And, and school population is dropping, so, you know, I'm hearing what he's saying too and I think you're not really comparing apples and apples when you're talking about your own personal business where you're in control, you get to decide how much work you do, your son does, et cetera. But with the county, it's, we're not making widgets here.
Well, you're, you're totally correct, there is a big difference there, but, you know...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment if I could on the debate. First of all, I think those people who have this vision that the public sector has to operate with private sector rules are gonna be rudely awakened because the public sector and the private sector are two different animals and creatures. And the idea that the public sector is gonna operate with the basis of making a profit is not what the public sector was created for. The public sector has basically relegated the functions and tasks of those things that don't make a profit 'cause if there was a profit to be made, the public sector, the private sector would do it. So this idea that we're gonna use those private sector mentalities to be judgmental about how the public sector operates, I think is where the first fallacy exists. Now, at the same time, I still think it's, you know, unprudent, even as a public sector person, trained and has spent my life and career working it, even though I have a private sector business and totally appreciate how the private sector functions. But as far as the public sector is concerned, you know, I think we have an obligation of being able to provide services in an efficient fashion. And that's one criticism, I think, that is legitimately heaped on the public sector is the fact that we don't take advantages of the efficiencies. And so I think part of what this reorganization and the use of this new space is designed to enhance the efficiency of the ability. It's not gonna necessarily save us any bottom line dollar, but if we can get more bang for our buck in terms of service. So the time that will be spent by the current staff in the current facilities to drive across town, day after day, hour after hour, over the long term, has consequences. And I think that's one of the things that attracts me about what we're doing. We're reacting to how this community has evolved. Maybe the same amount of people, maybe we're moving people around in different buildings. If that's the case, then why did the state build a thirty-four million dollar courthouse on the other side of town instead of investing in the courthouse facilities that we had? And that pitch was made to them aggressively by some of us, me in particular, back in two thousand and two thousand and two. I think they could have had the same amount of space available to them on the old historic courthouse site and done it for a third of the money and we would have a lot of other amenities, but the state and the judges didn't want that. They had something bigger in mind and their decision impacts all the rest of us to interact with that decision, with their decision. So we're, we're in the process now of interacting with them and, and I think that this is something we need to do. Now, the one difference I have with maybe my colleagues and have even with county staff is I think we have ample cash resources. I think we could go and spend this twelve point one million dollars today out of the existing winnings we have. Where I became, I guess, willing to set aside what would be my normal, and I realize I'm a minority opinion of that. I ran a campaign last year and lost on that particular argument. So I realize the public at large, at large, does not appreciate maybe the significance of where our county finances are at. But someday, you know, maybe they'll realize it. I'm not worried about this, 'cause if we all of a sudden see a downturn in the economy, I think we have, you know, the cash reserves available to us to be able to satisfy whatever debt we may have out there without compromising county services. Beyond that, you know, I think when it comes to utilizing these cheap dollars to be able to, I think it does make a lot of sense and I appreciate the leadership Mr. Egan has brought. It took him a while to convince me, he hit me over the head a few times with the two by four, to see the reality. Instead of drawing down your cash reserves and using this cheap money to be able to do this makes sense 'cause in my own private business, that's what I prefer to do. I like to pay cash for things, I don't like to owe anybody anything. That's the reason why I've been successful in my business for over thirty years. Because I own my equipment and when I put in the work, when I have time to put in the work there, that's my profit. It's my, it's all mine, I'm not giving it to somebody else because I went and borrowed it. So, yeah, I have to overcome those kinda innate, natural tendencies in order to be able to support this. But I think using these cheap dollars, you know, we basically, as a board, committed for fifteen years to use two hundred thousand dollars of the tobacco settlement money, which is two-thirds of that pot of money, three hundred thousand, that's available there year in and year out. And we were gonna get a swimming pool out of it, okay? Mr. Egan come to me and said, you know, instead of using two-thirds of that to get just a swimming pool, why not we take and use all of it to go out and borrow this money? We'll pay for the swimming pool, plus we'll be able to pay for and take care of these other needs that have been identified. And maybe take them out of the budgetary process that would suck up and dry up the resources we need to take care of ongoing maintenance type issues like the jail and others have, so that we don't have this, you know, some win and some lose. We can maybe make everybody winners. And the idea that we could get more by utilizing the, by structuring it properly, utilizing those tobacco settlement dollars, instead of getting a million dollars worth of value or three million dollars worth of value or two million dollars worth of value beating the county share for construction, you know, we could get, you know, four million dollars. I, I think that's huge and I think that's what gave me the comfort to be able to consider this as a viable option. And as been pointed out by staff, this is the vehicle used by government as the primary way of financing construction throughout the state. So this notion that some will put forth that this is some sort of lack of transparency and skulduggery and shadows in the closet type of way of conducting business, this is about as open in front and in your face as government is in terms of taking care of business and every other county and jurisdiction and state uses these vehicles. And I think that we would be remiss in not doing that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and I got a couple of last things then, Mr. Egan. First thing, this is a big deal and I appreciate you people being in here commenting, we need to hear it from everybody. Second thing, we have a fairly stable economy here. It's not like we got a big steel mill that couldn't close down and everybody leave. I mean, we got the prisons that go nowhere, agriculture going nowhere, and that basically is our economy. And the army depots. Government, let me say agriculture and government. And I'm not aware of any unfunded liabilities that we have.
I was kinda curious about that as well, I know after...
Retirement.
I'm sure Mr. McCain left the board, we funded the other post-employment benefits over a hundred percent now. I wonder if that's what...
We're debt free.
We're debt free till today.
Yeah, this, this, this is huge for us to take this step because it's not an easy one to do.
No, it's a big deal. Okay, Mr. Spence, there, Mr. Jim, then we're gonna go to Richard.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. All I've heard this morning is this cheap money, cheap money, which isn't a bad thing, cheap money. But what I think, County Health's getting a lot of feedback is you reduce the CIP down to two pages from eight and because the, because the jail is important, because Melody's, one stops and her welfare services are important, why wasn't that pushed up on the list to borrow maybe six million so you can't, year after year after year, say, oh, we're gonna get to it, we're gonna get to it? That's all you've ever done is we're gonna get to it. This was the opportunity with this so-called cheap money to fix the jail, the kitchen and ADA things. This, this was the time to do it and you never even mentioned doing the things on your two pages, cheap money. You could've done your two pages and borrowed six million or six and a half million at this cheap money and instead of year after year just saying, we'll get to you, Melody, we'll get to you, Bean, we'll, we'll fix your jail. You should've done that.
Okay, we should've done that, thank you, Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, I think Mr. Chapman made me, misunderstood me a little bit. I was just saying that the way government operates and the way that private business operates is different. Basically, that's, that's, that was basically what I was trying to get at.
That was a good comment.
So, point number two is, the most important thing that you just said was that we have a lot of cash reserves, that we have, that we have some flexibility, shall we say, that if things were to go a little sour, we still have a little cash in reserve. That's the most important thing that you said.
And that may be a matter of opinion between Jim and me.
Yeah, we argued, we've argued about it for eighteen years and that's okay. Bob and I will leave it together at the same time and then there will be no more argument.
Thank you, Jim, Richard.
Two things, I think, you know, the tug of war between, you know, six million dollars and zero dollars is, you know, interestingly, the same kinda discussion we have internally about, about, you know, whether to borrow or not. I stand by the recommendation to do these, these three projects. I think we are going to see some savings in terms of efficiency and workflow. I think the one thing that has not been mentioned today that I hesitate a little bit to mention, but it's very important, and that is that, you know, we live in a world full of lawyers that are constantly... President company...
We certainly do.
That are, you know...
Do you think the county council is not a lawyer?
Yes.
They're, you know, forever looking at the deep pockets of the county for whatever kind of, you know, general liability claim they can, they can put forward. And, and quite frankly, you know, right now, we're in a lot of facilities that, as you can see from this room, they're not that easily accessible to, to people with disabilities. We've got a district attorney that's housed on the second floor of a building with, with no elevator. We've got many public departments in this building on the second floor with no elevator. I think that, you know, the, the potential liability that that presents will be largely mitigated by what we're doing, hopefully gonna do today in moving some of these departments into much better accessible buildings for the public. Not only the public, but also our employees, as the board knows, we spend, you know, roughly around a million dollars in workers' comp insurance annually. I, I think, you know, those things are very difficult to quantify, but I think they're extremely important when we look at these decisions.
Yes, and that's a good, good point, Mr. Egan, if the chairman, if Mr. Chapman...
I would, I would, just to get, so we could have a discussion in further, I would move that we adopt the resolution attached and authorize the chairman, the board of supervisors and/or the CAO, the executing, you know, document, necessary for continued issues of these previous finances.
We have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and second discussion, Mr. Hammond.
Everett, I too, enter that debt reluctantly. And if, if there was unfunded liabilities out there like that, I wouldn't even consider that. You scared me when you said that. So, that's been clarified, that we do not have these unfunded liabilities.
Well, let me expand on that, 'cause there's something I'm particularly proud of. We, the board, four years ago, I believe it was, funded the other post-employment benefits fund through the CalPERS system at one hundred percent. Since that time, the earnings on that fund have far exceeded the actuarial expectations to a point where we're...
Around a hundred and ten percent now?
We're, around a hundred and ten percent funded in that, we're overfunded, in fact, in the other post-employment benefits.
You know, I think Mr. Egan summed it up really good in his remarks he just made. We, we're good on the unfunded liabilities, we are debt free and we've got our, ourself, our organization... What we have problems is operational liability and I think that the potential litigation is huge and we've gotta be proactive. The Modoc County just here, two, three months ago, opened up and installed an elevator in their hundred-year-old courthouse as well. I mean, we've got things like that, we're really falling behind in the times and we're gonna be seeing more and more frustrations. And I tell you, if we don't take care of business now, they're gonna come walking in the door and serve them papers and you're gonna be taking care of business before a judge, paying out claims that you haven't even tend to even bring of what. And it far exceed what you'll have under the, and I think we have a management program to pay off this debt. We have ample reserves, so if we need to, we can always step in to take care of it, to clear up. So I'm, I'm satisfied that we can get the job done and do it in cost effectively.
Okay, no more questions from the public? See none, any more from the board?
Right, that's true. You know, I, I agree with what everybody said today, you know, a lot of this stuff, there's so much stuff we can't control, you know, like putting the Hall of Justice down there. I remember when that, they opened up to come back, I remember Bob, he was the DA, he was coming in there and he was complaining about the inefficiencies of his staff, of having to run back and forth to just even to get one paper.
And that would manage officers fragmented into three locations.
Right, and so there's a lot of issue, you know, the AD, like Richard talked, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that comes about that we have no control over, you know, having the prisoners down there. I mean, Bean's been in there, you know, complaining about the extra resources it takes for him to even house people down there 'cause it's farther away, et cetera. You know, then you got the AB 108 coming this night, you're talking about the, another deal, potentially putting in or the...
Day reporting...
The day reporting center, there's so much stuff we can't control, you know, and we gotta have the facilities to keep up with all this stuff and it's sad and unfortunate, you know, I mean, I think it's a good deal to get that building down there. Personally, the problem I have is, is the funding of the pool. I mean, I've been against that for day one or for multiple reasons because I don't think it's the, all the taxpayers of Lassen County should pay the benefit of one community, of one area of the county. I think that that's wrong and that's where my problem of this whole thing comes in, is, is on the swimming pool funding of it. But as far as the, the building, acquisition, the other, except for the one point one million, that's the only thing that I have is just with the... The rest of it, I think, is, is a good deal, it's moving county forward in the right direction.
Thank you, Detective Alba, Adam Clark, can you call the board?
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
No.
Supervisor Hamhill?
Aye.
Supervisor Hammond?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyle?
Aye. Bless you, Pat.
Thank you, and I will point out to the board that there will be several actions, follow-up actions to this when we actually get around to appropriating these funds to actually spend them. This will finalize the financing, but when that money comes in, we'll also have to appropriate it, either through the annual banking process or the special...
Again, I wanna thank the public for your questions, they're very good questions, very informative and very thoughtful, thank you very much. We'll move on to, all right, your H five... I'm getting their H five reclassification.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing this from myself from this item, I have a retto home to Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you can recall, in approximately August of 2014, County Administrative Officer Egan set about the process of recommending some structural changes in the administrative office of the county. If you recall, the personnel director position was permanently eliminated. There was a position created entitled Deputy County Administrative Officer, that has subsequently been filled. And the safety coordinator position was replaced to Personnel Statuarist Analyst. And one additional change was identified then and not advanced. And that was the position of Administrative Assistant to the Office of the CAO. It is perceived to be more correctly classified as that of the Executive Assistant to the CAO. Obviously, the premise of this is in part the result of the reorganization that CAO has constructed within that office. The proposed job description I've attached, the, the position currently does a number of things that it never did. And some of those tasks include, interestingly, drafting or participation in the preparation of MOUs during negotiations, which is an interesting task. Has participated heavily in the preparation of the budget. Annually, has provided support to this board individually, like in its public relations activities, as I'm certain you've all experienced. Has also managed the county website and I think you'll see some significant changes in that in the short term. And likewise, is engaged in all of the sales of surplus properties from the county. And we're talking about rentals and or, she participated heavily in the RFP process with some of the real properties that we recently sold as well. And so, what that position once did is a mere fraction of what it resembles now. And that is the premise on which this reclassification is offered. Happy to answer any questions. You should know, as Mr. Egan correctly identified, he can't participate in this and he's asked me to address it with you. And so consequently, there I am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question from the board?
So what was the previous range?
Twenty.
Twenty, you moved up to twenty-two, same step?
Well, twenty-two, whatever range that be, A through E, yes. There are five steps within each range.
You have a question?
I just have a comment, not a question.
Okay, comment, question, whatever, Jim.
Well, you know, I, I think at the center of every organization is always seems to be one person who's the glue that holds together the functioning of a particular office and I think this is true in all of the larger offices. Even though you have elected department heads and you have a management structure, but it all kinda boils down to is, within the sheriff's operation, there's gonna be one person that, behind the scenes, doesn't get the glory, you know, winds up getting the task of following through. The decisions are oftentimes made at a much higher level, but the implementation of those decisions, carrying through, making sure, you know, the places, you know, the flow of the organizations there. Mel, Bobby has one or two people that she can relate to that are at administrative staff level, you know, administrative assistant level, and those, those are the positions that are there. And I would say that the functioning of the county, and I always kinda just jokingly said, as we had changes in administrative officers and stuff, that they basically get their orders from this one person. And I think that this particular job, you know, is really one of the key jobs at the center of the functioning county government. And that person, whether they want to or not, whether we recognize it or not in the job description, whether we pay for it or not, is the person that really kinda makes things happen. And, and I've, you know, been able to observe that position up front and personal for a long time now. The current occupants, about the fourth person, someone that's been in it, in that position since the establishment of the CAO's office, assumes a lot of the, taking care of the needs of the board of supervisors. Whenever used to, we'd go, maybe get the clerk's office or just do it ourselves, I'm used to doing it myself. But more and more, having, you know, somebody who can generate the letters, can, you know, do whatever, the rest of the staff is already preoccupied doing something else and not necessarily available. So I, I think it's something that, at least the title and the duties and the respect is there. And I realize it creates a lot of consternation by others that are in that middle pay range and all of a sudden now there's a bump up here. But, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to look at the overall structure as you bump up the position enough. But the work being done by this position, I tell you, far exceeds even what we identify in this particular job description. And I think the value of what that person does to make the organization of the county happen is beyond what I think most people appreciate. And I'm, I'm in support of you.
Okay, any other, I'm asking for it. Anything, fellas?
Should we tape, wait till later on this, after we go through the budget process or...
Well, this has been waited, you know, this is the one that got kicked to the curb and wait till later or whatever. So, you know, from budget time to budget time, you know, when, when we're on budget session, you know, kick it to the budget session, get to the budget session, they kick it to us deal with it later when we don't have all, everything else, so it drags on. This is about the third or fourth time this one has come at the board, so, as you can, there's no reason why you can't. And then a bunch of time they'll kick it till later on.
Okay, I just say, I will be supporting this reclassification. Do I have a, the chair will entertain a motion?
I'd make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
All right, second.
You have a motion, second. Any more discussion from the board or the public? Adam Clark, can you call the board?
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Hamhill?
No.
Supervisor Hammond?
No.
Supervisor Pyle?
Aye. Okay, let's move on to page ten. Resolution, third, the Turbien, the Turbien?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Adam Clark, Jennifer Baran, Chief Probation Officer.
Eric Nelson, Director.
The reason why we're here together today is to present a resolution to recognize May as Foster, National Foster Care Month. Both of our agencies typically place children into foster care and this is a great time...
Will you invite Mr. Egan back?
Probably easier.
I guess that shows how much we miss him, huh?
But it's a great time to recognize foster parents and the job that they do, working with those with their children.
Sorry, Ricky, Ricky forgot about it.
He's leasing up there.
Go ahead, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. And it's a good time to also recognize the social workers, law enforcement, probation officers and all of our other community partners. The teachers... I mean, there's just a million people out there that really work hard for our foster youth within Lassen County, to make sure that all the areas are taken care of. So this is just another way to recognize them as well.
We're asking for your support.
I'm gonna tie out the deal?
Yeah. They wanna know if we got a tie out of the deal?